This conference will now be recorded.
Not until the mayor goes back and picks up that piece of paper, he true.
I'll have Sage clean it up. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the May 25th, 2021 Tenino City Council Work Session. All members are present with the exception of Councilmember Rachel Davidson. And we'll have to, when we do the agenda, she's, she has a, she's doing a driver's ed test. She's not doing a driver's ed test, her son is doing a driver's ed test. So when we get to the agenda, it would be nice if we could add to the consent calendar, excuse all of Councilmember Davidson. With that said, the only thing on the work session we've got is our running discussion of Ag Park updates. And the latest and greatest and where we're at and where we're going, what else we need. And that can, that will be led by our shepherd, Aslan Mead. So I will hand it over to Mr. Mead.
Thanks. I don't actually have anything I have to share. So as far as sharing screen goes, shepherd, huh? Now I'm shepherding? Hmm. That's an interesting new profession. So I add that to the title. Um, I, I think the most exciting thing, I'm bummed that Rachel's not here tonight. I mean, Council, Councilwoman Davidson. Um, I think one of the most exciting pieces of the last two weeks since we talked to you last was we got to go out and see the Equestrian Center with a team of people that included Rachel and the mayor. And Chris Hallid and Tyler Whitworth and some other members of the community, as well as some of our potential tenants for the Ag Park. And we all met with Dusty Johnson. And it was just, it was really a great love fest. It was, uh, Dusty is just so committed to this community and investing in this community, what they're building out there is so fantastic. And we just immediately started to see synergies with what we are doing across the street. And Dusty is like, I don't know how you describe it, maybe the, the mayor could say something, but he's like a hundred percent non-competitive. He's like, if you want to do something over there, we'll complement what you're doing, you know? And he's not, you know, he wouldn't compete for tenants. In fact, he's now actually starting to find more tenants for us. He's like, oh, now that I know what you're doing, I have some tenants I could send your way.
And they're really, really impressive ideas. Uh, we can take some time, we have a half hour, we can talk about, and you, or you can share with us what the vision is that Dusty conveyed. Cause not everybody's, not everybody's up to speed on that.
Yeah. Well, I mean, feel free to jump in there. I mean, this is not my, I feel like you have a more.
It's the Aslan hour.
What's that?
It's the Aslan hour.
But I mean, just, you know, the equestrian pieces, you know, they're building two large indoor arenas. One is 40,000 square feet and one's even larger. It's pretty crazy. And then there'll be an outdoor arena, you know, they'll have the veterinary services with these kind of high-tech equipment, you know, water treadmills for horses and electric stimulation for the horses. And I mean, you know, really cutting edge, state of the art. But then they also plan on having a cafe, like restaurant there, um, you know, camping, you know, overnight stays for their guests and, you know, you know, looking at events that could pull in. I don't know what some of those numbers were, seemed outrageous, like, you know, what Wayne?
I'm gonna say about 2,000 people over a weekend. So this is, this is the equivalent of us getting a professional sports team in our little town. It's, it's, it's a big deal. Like Aslan said, uh, you know, forty-two, forty, one 40,000 square foot arena and another that's even larger. They, there would be barrel racing, there would also be an outdoor rodeo arena, professional bull riding, professional rodeos. And, you know, every weekend almost, and, and they're talking about equestrian events that would bring in, they're setting up stalls or rooms essentially for 500 horses. So with 500 horses comes, you know, a thousand to 1,500 people. And then all the people to come watch those people compete, this is a big deal. Uh, and it's, and it's really cool because it really, it brings back that property to what it, what it was. What it was in the, in the 50s and 60s when Dandar Farms was the premier racing and equine facility in the state. So it, uh, it's, 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 it's really, it's a really neat story. He is, he is able to do a lot of the construction that he's doing with little encumbrances because he is building on existing pads. So there were a lot of old barns out there and, you know, I'm sure that some people that really liked seeing those old barns might've had some heartache with seeing them come down. But if you'd have been through them, you'd understand that they were beyond repair. They'd been through years and years of of, of no, no maintenance. So they had to be removed. And, but it does create an opportunity for, uh, Tenino, I think Tenino Ranch is what it used to be called and what they're gonna call it now. To create and recreate a state-of-the-art facility, like Aslan mentioned, there's, there is a veterinary clinic out there that they're keeping. And it will have a, like a hydro treadmill. So a horse has been injured and people, these people spend thousands and thousands of dollars on horses. So, you know, to send one to this facility and have it, you know, rehab, like a sprain or a strain on a hydro treadmill where it's submerged up to its haunches or whatever. And then it gets on there and runs and runs and runs and rebuilds itself. Or they were talking about vibrating pads where these horses would get on there and these, these vibrating pads would help strengthen the joints. And then like a, some type of solar sun room and it's like a horse spa. And then, uh, he's also talking about building a veterinary clinic for horses and bringing in one of the best veterinarians in the country to take residency there, uh, working with different vet schools. It's, it's really, really top-notch and exciting. Events, you know, Aslan mentioned a cafeteria, a restaurant, a bar, a camp, uh, camping, RV camping. This is kind of a big deal.
And, you know, this, the direct synergies were pretty amazing with what's both what we're doing at the Ag Park as well as, you know, some of the other exciting new businesses coming into town and people fixing up buildings downtown. And, um, and, you know, we brought one of our tenants out that is related, you know, interested tenant, uh, that is, could be related to what Dusty's doing across the street. And he was like, you know, where do I sign? You know, it's like, it's like, I'm ready to sign a letter of intent, you know, like, you know, if you gave me terms, I'd sign a lease. So, um, that's really exciting. And then that whole property, just, we got a call also last week from, uh, from Fish and Wildlife. So that, it looks like it's really going through for, you know, the majority of the property to be opened up. That, you know, be mitigation for species, but it will be opened up for, you know, hiking and horseback riding and hunting and things in the back forty. And then it looks like there's also potential movement on Lemon Hill for residential development. So, I mean, that whole Barnett property is finally, after all those years of him being a pretty tough SOB, looks like it's, it's, it's starting to come together. So, uh, and, and so much of it could tie into again, and be a synergy with what we're doing across the street as well as what's happening in town. So.
I, I think it's important to note that saying that property is opening up and it's kind of unlocking its potential. It's doing so in ways that are, that are very different than, uh, than was, you know, proposed and discussed, you know, 10, 12, 13 years ago in Tenino. When the, the vision and the, the planning put forth, uh, houses and houses and houses on the prairie. Uh, this, this is a different concept. This is a concept that, you know, kind of acknowledges that the prairie habitat is important. It preserves that the farmland is farmland and it, it allows, you know, some residential development on the hillside where there's, you know, kind of less sensitive. And, and if you look at the planned tracks, the, the houses are kind of like, kind of in tune with the landscape a little better. And then the lowlands are allow for, you know, the, you know, the, the habitat conservation needs. They allow for uses that, that kind of support agriculture and support the community. And so instead of just taking and taking and taking land, this is, I see really is a way to, to, uh, contribute to a lot more people for a lot more time.
Well, and it also keeps that, those view corridors. And I mean, that is one of the most beautiful pieces of property in Southwest Washington, you know, hands down. And it still allows for, you know, we were looking at the possibilities, you know, more likely maybe two to 300 houses on the hills residential style. But could be as much as 400 or more, um, possibly on that hillside. So it's still, you know, residential development happens on Lemon Hill. We keep that beautiful piece of property for, you know, the Equestrian Center and Ag-related. Uh, you know, you can still graze on that property, things that have been going on there for years. You open up the back forty to recreational uses, we extend the trail, you know, the, you know, Tenino Trail down to this property. Yeah. So anyways, it opens up a lot of.
These are all the things that we have fought for, for the last decade and they're like coming together. It's, it's, it's wild.
And I'm telling you, man, with what like George is doing with the chamber and what's going on with the building that Chris Hallid built and the Bountiful Center that's coming in there. I mean, and just the quality, we have.
I don't know if everybody's been told about that. So, you know, we talked about the Equestrian Center. And I, would you, you know, and we, we still can get back to the Ag Park stuff, but you want to tell everybody about the, uh, the Bountiful office, the Bountiful, what is it? The Bountiful, uh?
Yeah, marketplace. George, you wanna hop on here?
Yeah, George is here.
Hello, everybody. Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
So we're creating what's going to be called Bountiful, a marketplace and more. It's gonna be located in the building, this in between the Landmark Tavern and the Eagles. The building's owned by Chris Hallid, but the Thurston EDC Steady Program will be the manager of the building. We have a lease with Chris. It's gonna be an art gallery, a gift shop. It'll have a visitor information center. It'll be home to the Tenino Chamber of Commerce and to the Creative District. We're just now recruiting artisans to be in it. Our two main artisans are gonna be Stu Waldrop with Creative Ironworks. And then Joyce Worrell from the Ironworks Boutique is actually gonna upscale furniture and also sell a specialty paint out of there. We're also in the gift shop area. We're gonna focus on specialty food products that are made in Thurston County. We're gonna have the Main Street Cookie Company Cookies there. We're working to get Ole Kraut there, possibly to get Johnson meats there. And some other cheeses located there. We have Isla Foods who makes jams, jellies. And so right now in the recruiting process to, uh, secure food products to be in there and then also other artisans. Our world-class artist and Donna Taylor Mail, who's a world-class class artist, she's gonna have her artwork in there as well. And we're hoping to have Alan with the Pottery Company that's in Tenino to have his pottery located in there. So it's a pretty exciting project. We hope to open on June, uh, Father's Day weekend, on June 17th, on a Thursday. It will be open Thursday, Friday, Saturday and Sunday from 11:00 AM to 5:00 PM. I'll be there on Thursdays and Fridays, and then the artisans will be part of the people who work the store. Jessica Reeves-Rush is gonna be our onsite manager for us and, uh, super excited to get a kickstart going.
It's great. George has done an amazing job putting this together. He's been like a torpedo, getting this all like pulled in. And it's, it's amazing that, you know, Steady from what 10 years ago, you know, and the, and the chamber coming along as far as it has. And then like being big enough, strong enough, uh, productive enough to, to, to warrant a space like this. And, uh, I mean, this is, this has been a dream of George's and a lot of other people's and it's, it's gonna be really neat to see happen. Thank you, George.
Yeah.
We're gonna do a ribbon cutting at 10:00 AM on, uh, June 18th, that's the Friday.
Yeah, that'd be great to have people out there. We also will embed EDC services there and be able to like give coaching and trainings and things of that nature. And, and, and just, there's just great things going on in the chamber. George put on a great, uh, chamber meeting at the, with partnering with the new, new event center. But just seeing all the remodeling they're doing and their investment in there and Don Wong's catered the lunch. And so the chamber making use of one of the new, newly renovated, renovated spaces. And anyways, it's just a lot of, you know, we're fielding new interest for businesses who want to locate here and we're trying to find buildings from. And, you know, there's just a lot of energy focused on Tenino right now and a lot of it's following the, the vision of a more creative town. That is a, you know, a tourist destination gathering place, you know, keeping our historic character and nature. So.
Dan, I'll send you an email tonight with all the information I just shared so you have it.
Alright, so, yeah, go ahead. So, so back to the Ag Park, so, you know, we've been continuing to have conversations with current tenants. They're all the ones that are most interested, are still very interested and we're, we're taking steps forward. Like I said, Dusty's actually finding us new tenants that are fantastic and, uh, that's just a great connection and a partnership to have. Dusty also offered, you know, as, as a construction person, offered to like review our bid when it goes out and, you know, help us, you know, you know, understand processes that we don't fully understand and make sure that we're not, you know, we're getting the best deal possible. And, uh, so just a great ally to have there. On, on the bid process, we are, you know, right now starting to have meetings with civil engineers, architects to prepare, you know, our, our building design that would go out to bid, since the city's involved, you know, with the, the, the bond financing piece, uh, likely to be involved. You know, we do have to go out to bid for the, the building design, uh, for the, and, and we're, we're, we're close to doing that, you know? Lord knows nothing moves as quickly as certainly Aslan would like, so it may take another month or something. Um, or maybe, who knows? I don't know. I will learn more as I go and I will keep you informed how long that's gonna take. But, you know, we are getting close to being able to, to put out the civil and the building. And we even think every time to Dusty, we might do it for two buildings, um, that, that we might be actually be able to, to come in with a lower bid now. So, so anyways, that is exciting to move that part of the process forward. We just heard back from the, the bond people, they have prepared their first document for our review. We just got that. We have not even started to look at it yet. Um, but we're gonna be setting up a meeting to review that with them next week. The city is preparing their financial paperwork. I don't know if, if, if Wayne or, or Rebecca wanna talk anything about that process. But basically, you know, we haven't had a city clerk treasurer for quite some time and now we're undertaking some, you know, rather large steps. So there's gonna be some catching up to do and, and preparing of things that are, that we, you know, kind of fell behind on. So.
Very good. Uh, does anyone have any questions for Aslan, George or I regarding any of the topics that we've discussed this far?
Not a question, but just a suggestion, maybe somebody should talk to the equestrian people. And as a city, we might want to start looking at bringing in a hotel. And once that happens, we can start setting up meeting space, which is sorely lacking Thurston County for major conventions, that kind of stuff. And placing it all in that neighborhood would be a great place to go.
We are all on the same page and those discussions are in the works.
I love it, John.
I can't say too much, but I mean, there, yes, it, I, yes, they, you know, those discussions are already well underway.
If we, I think they had like one of those game shows where there was that special word, you would have had the buzzer gone off when you said hotel. That must've been the word of the week, John, right?
Yes.
It's been coming up.
That's been something on, on the back burner since I got on council in 96, so.
Well, we're gonna probably pull it off in the next three to four years.
Gotta work.
That and the parking lot, John.
Yeah, I know about the parking lot. Uh, that should, when, when are we breaking ground on that? When's that actually happen?
15 years. George?
I was saying, that's been on the agenda for 15 years.
On the docket. Well, we're gonna knock that out too. Uh, Public Works has been over there. The engineering is, is pretty much done. If, you know, you look at, there's drawings that are done up and have all kinds of things showing swales and where water flows and all that thing, all that stuff. Public Works have been over there. There's a bunch of spray paint on the ground. The, the, you know, we intend to fund this with the American Rescue Plan money. I know that we are slated to get 200,000 in June. I, I don't know exactly when that happens, what that looks like. You know, I'm still trying to, you know, research that and everybody's kind of getting more answers closer to the target as we get a little further along. But, uh, you know, the, the money is not in hand. So there's, you know, you know, there's hesitation about, you know, pulling the trigger on certain things. But the engineering is near completion and that's been a big portion of it. What else? Linda, Jason, Cutter? Do you guys have?
It's just a lot of.
I mean, what's that, John?
It's just a lot of stuff that's finally starting to happen since I first got on council and, and brought this stuff up.
That's good.
We just haven't had the money and we also had a lot of, uh, a lot of people that were against any kind of growth, which puts a lot of stops on stuff.
Yeah. And really, I mean, these, these things are a decade in the making. I mean, you know, you, you've been, you say you've been talking about it since you've been on council. That's a long time. We have been actively pursuing these things and laying, you know, laying the tracks and laying the groundwork and, you know, building the initiative for a decade. You know, Steady, it was, it was 10 years ago when we all met at the elementary school. And, you know, these things, you know, they take time and they take consistency, right? We've had consistent leadership. We've had consistent vision and direction for the last 10 years. And, I mean, when we started talking about the Ag Park, I never would have imagined it would take the time it's taken, but I understand now why these things take so long. And, uh, it, but I'm, but we, it really feels tangible. It feels like we're right there. We just need to, you know, we need to get it, we need to all be shepherds of these ideas and get it across the finish line.
I think that it's all coming together just at the right time. It really is, you know? You guys have worked so hard on this. Well, we all have. It's just very, very exciting that, that this kind of thing could come to Tenino.
Yeah, and we used to, we would have to go out and, uh, recruit businesses like we're recruiting college athletes. You know, like we would go hunt them down and, you know, we would, you know, Aslan and I would go out and, you know, meet people and, you know, we go out and have a few beers and end up, you know, talking to business owners and trying, like jokingly trying to like persuade them into coming to Tenino. And initially, you know, some of them had started out kind of like, you know, kind of a pipe dream, but then, you know, some of them are landing here. Like White Wood Cider was one that I just met randomly at a port commission and, you know, fell in love with the business and their vision. Yeah, Aslan's drinking white wood glass right now, water, I'm, I'm hoping. And, uh, you know, just took five, six years to really find them a home and talk them into it. And, uh, you know, some of them that are wanting to be in the Ag Park were ones that, you know, six, seven years ago were starting out. And I was bringing them down to, you know, show them what was, you know, Roger's Home Furnishings. And like, hey, could you imagine your business? And well, you know, it's an old building. It's not that. But then now we're, we're like doing things and George can attest to it, cause he's sending me and Aslan and I emails of businesses that are looking for real estate in Tenino. And these are like good, like really impressive places that aren't, you know, not, that are not, uh, you know, box stores or, you know, they're still, you know, mom and pop, successful mom and pop businesses that would, you know, fit very well into our community. We're, so we're being selective. It's, it's really exciting.
You know, one of the things that can help sell, uh, businesses to the downtown section is if you get some of the old pictures of the stores, uh, you can see that a lot of the buildings were set up with windows that would let light in from one side. Cooling come in, the whole nine yards, those windows used to be able to open. They're just closed off. As a business, as a business moves out or they start doing some kind of renovation, it might be a good idea to bring that stuff back because it'll keep, uh, their heating and cooling costs down in the summer and winter. And it's, uh, will bring in a whole lot of light so they can keep the doors, the lights off for a lot longer.
Yeah, like the, you know, the vinegar, Wildheart, is that, is that, is Wildheart, right? Uh, they, they moved into what was, uh, the old, uh, well, it's been a couple of different coffee shops. And they, you know, I've gone in there and, you know, Aslan's gone in there and we've talked to them about exactly what you're talking about, John. They have windows up top that have been covered up and we let them know, we have a SOD grant, they can help you renovate that. It can open it back up and it, you know, brings it back to a more like appropriate period of design. And, and you're right, it's just, you know, there's nothing wrong with some good airflow.
I love it. I love the whole lighting as a historic piece. And Linda, back at you, by the way, like you are one of the hardest working and oftentimes as a volunteer, like what you all have been doing with those downtown businesses, like just keeping them all united and knitted together and inspired and working together. I, you know, I was down there, uh, my buddy Derek actually is doing some of the counter work at, at this new place that George and Chris Hallid are, are putting together. And I went down to see, you know, this beautiful live edge wood that he's creating, you know? And, and then, you know, while I'm down there, the amount of people I ran into in the street, you know, you know, Joyce coming across the street and then Wayne stopped by and Chris stopped by. And it's just like walking between my house and a downtown shop, like the community, like we have a community and not everybody has it. I mean, everybody craves it. People want to be part of a, something, you know, be united, be part of something bigger than themselves. And we have it, you know, our business community is a community and it's beautiful.
I can't tell you how many people come into the shop and tell us how much they love Tenino and how wonderful it is to be here. I, it, it's just heartwarming to, to listen to these people. These are strangers coming from out of town. And they stop in the shop and just say, oh my God, I've never been here before. This is marvelous. I'll be back, I'll be back, I'll be back. You know, and of course, I can't quit talking about how wonderful the town is. So Joyce and I both give them kind of a verbal tour of everything going on. So.
You guys are both good ambassadors. If you haven't been down to the farmer's market yet, please, you know, give it a shot. Uh, a great weekend to go down there. I think June 12th, right, George? Is that when the next Makers Fair is? So on certain weekends, I think one, once a month, they have the other side of Olympia Street now blocked off. And they also have like, uh, the creative arts area, right? Is that, can you sum that up?
The second, second Saturday of every month, it'll be the same time, uh, 10 to three as the farmer's market. And they have, I think, 15 people that are interested in attending the June 12th one.
Okay. Yeah. And Sherry, Sherry, the, the farmer's market director told the chamber the other day that the farmer's market is, uh, more successful than it's ever been. Every year it's grown and grown and grown since we've moved it to Olympia Street. And this year they have so many vendors and for the first time they're actually turning vendors away. And that's, you know, that's, that's pretty big. She said that they were, they were, uh, a lot of the farmer's markets, they were, they got, uh, stimulus money from the federal government and because a lot of them were struggling. Uh, they, they, I had a talk with them over this weekend. They, they got like, you know, two $10,000 grants. And most of the other farmer's markets, they're, they've needed those and ours, you know, they had such a, last year during COVID was their most successful year ever. So they weren't struggling. They still got that stimulus money. And so they came to me and they're like, what do we do with this money? You got any ideas? That's a good problem. That's, that's a really good problem to have. So.
That's George and me too. We administered those grants. So.
Good job, guys.
It is great to see. And the, when they close off that other side of the street, it's all, you know, it's all the artisans are out in front of the stone shed. So, so that, the stone carver, so it ties that piece into, to, which is always a great story for Tenino. So.
Maybe what I think do with some of that stimulus money is to come up with, uh, some kind of flyers that can go out throughout the rest of Thurston County, get us a little bit more, uh, exposure.
Well, they, they, I know they want to get a porta potty. So they're looking at that and I, we, we told them that they could use one of the, uh, parking stalls that are next to the library. Since that's now the city's parking lot that we got that gifted to us from KeyBank. And there's a, there's like a strip, if you look at the sidewalk on the east side of Olympia Street, there's a weird strip of, of dirt where it goes, it goes sidewalk and then dirt and then curb. And it's, so it makes it weird for them to walk on the curb. So they want to finish off that sidewalk. But those, those are two simple projects. So, you know, it'll be interesting to see what they come up with. All right, we got one minute left. If you have any final comments, questions or thoughts for, uh, George, Aslan or I regarding the, the Ag Park, regarding the Bountiful Marketplace? regarding the bountiful marketplace or anything else, now's your chance.
Yeah, Aslan, not to put you on the spot. I know there's still like funding and all that stuff, but what is your goal? When is your goal to break ground for the Ag Park?
Right? I mean, you know, we have, I've met with multiple construction companies, civil engineers, uh, commercial property managers, like, do you think I can give you an answer? You know, people say that once you break ground, a building takes about eight months to go up, right? So, how, how far off are we from breaking ground? You know, my best guess at this point is four months. Um, so a building by a year from now, but, you know, I don't trust that. At this point, everything has taken longer than it was supposed to take. But that's my best guess, Jason.
All right. This wraps up the work session. Thank you, everybody for participating.
Uh, Wayne?
Sir?
Do you have any contact info for that Tenino Ranch?
Yes, I'll work on that for you.
Yeah, okay. I'd like to get some of that and, you know, do a thorough story on them.
Absolutely, absolutely. Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the May 25th, 2021 Tenino City Council Meeting. Let the record show that all city council members are present with the exception of Councilmember Davidson, who is, uh, helping her son take a driver's ed test. Please stand for the flag symbol.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Wichita stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have an agenda before us needing approval. I asked earlier that you make an amendment to the agenda to include in the consent calendar, excusal of Councilmember Davidson.
So moved.
Second. It has been moved and seconded to approve the agenda as stated with the addition.
The amended agenda.
The amended agenda as discussed. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. That brings us to the minutes of the regular city council meeting for 5/11/2021.
Move approval.
Okay.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the meeting minutes for 5/25/2021. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. That brings us to the consent calendar.
No approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar consisting of May 12th, 2021 through May 25th, 2021 payroll EFTs in the amount of $18,358.86. Claims checks number 29894 through 29919 and EFTs in the amount of $487,923.26. Uh, that's a big one. If you need an explanation, just ask. Uh, for a grand total of $506,282.12 along with excusal of Councilmember Davidson and, uh, approval of liquor license for Brothers Pizza and Brew and Mill Lane Winery. Uh, so I know it's going to come up, but, uh, would Rana or Becca want to explain the $500,000? I know there's like a $350,000 check in there.
This is Rana.
Okay.
It is the Department of Commerce for the wastewater treatment plant.
For?
The wastewater treatment plant.
For the, 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 uh, loan payment.
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
Your blood money. Did I say that aloud?
Blood, it's a, it's a different substance. All right, we have a, a consent calendar on the agenda, with a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. We have no executive session. We have no presentations. If there's anyone in the public that would like to provide comment, uh, please do so at this time. You'll be given three minutes. State your name and address. Again, if there's anyone in the public that would like to provide comment for city council. Going once, going twice, moving on. No proclamations. That brings us to old business or old business. Where are we at?
Everybody have a TP contract?
Yep, yep. Jen, can you scroll down so I can see it? Okay, this is a review of the WWTP contract. This of waste. So this was the, uh, we had a presentation a month ago on, uh, the, uh, the waste. Wha- what was the title of it? No, this is, I can't even see it. Why can't I see it tonight?
Because it's really small.
Yeah, it looks, it's.
This is the contract that we would go into with each vendor that's choosing to dump at our site.
Yeah, sorry, the, the, just the present, the way it's presenting on my screen looks different than normal and I can hardly read it. So we're not looking for approval on this. This is a contract that we just wanted to share for information and make sure everybody was, uh, comfortable with it. We've been talking about septic hauling for years. We built and created a septic receiving station. The, uh, the thing that has been holding us up is finalizing a contract that was usable. Uh, this contract has been vetted by the city attorney. Uh, we've taken all his recommendations and included them in the contract. Uh, we're, you know, once you have all seen it, if there's any questions or comments, please give them to us now. Because if we hear nothing, we will, you know, that, we will consider that consent. Because this is purely an administrative thing. We just want to make sure that everybody is, is well aware of the work that we've done to make sure we've got a good contract. Uh, we would intend to go, you know, go live with this in the next week. Uh, so this has been a project that we've been talking about for years. Uh, we estimate that if it is fully functional, it could generate up to $2 million for the wastewater, for the, the water, the, the septic, uh, the wastewater treatment plant fund.
Um, per year?
Yeah, that's, that's what the study told us. You know, we're going to start out small. Uh, there, there will be a few select trusted septic haulers that we'll start out with to try and iron out the kinks. Uh, figure out kind of what capacity we can handle as far as uh, truck traffic and, you know, cleanup and management and those kinds of things. But we, you know, we spent the last six months hauling out biosolids. Uh, those, we, we've completed that. And we've got the lagoon down to the level we're comfortable with. We're going to keep hauling those out. Uh, we did have a plan to bring in a de-watering device. Uh, we did such a, you know, we did such a good job hauling off the biosolids. We don't feel that the, the de-watering device is necessary. So we're comfortable with bringing in the septic haulers at this point. And then, uh, at the next meeting, Troy's going to talk about the money budgeted for the de-watering device. He would like to shift that over into purchasing membranes. Uh, but that's going to be a discussion at the next meeting. So has everybody had a chance to look over the contract?
Yeah, one of the things that I would suggest is, uh, give it a two-year lifespan so we know that all the bugs have worked out. Uh, find out for as close as possible to a hard dollar figure that we're actually getting. Uh, after, after we've paid for all the initial setup to start looking at, uh, possible reduction of fees to the general public. And then, and, and just see how we can go from that point on. That was one of the biggest reasons that we're doing this is so that we can reduce the fees because that, that will all feed into that one section right there.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, we, we've done, we haven't had to raise uh, the, the fees in, I think, two years. So, so we've been, we've been pretty successful in, uh, in, in operating it. We haven't, we had, we, we had initially said that we were going to have to have a 2% fee increase annually, and we haven't done that to my recollection in two years. So I thi- I think we're starting to look better. Uh, also with the, the, uh, potential development that I can talk about a little bit, but I can't let, I can't give out too much information. Uh, the additional hookups to that, we could see, we could actually see a reduction in utility fees.
And that, that's all I'm asking is that we actually start in earnest looking at that. Uh, the, the biggest reason that we didn't have to raise the increase, if you remember, the first figures that we were given uh, were pretty erroneous, remember? Uh, we, where they say, well, we're going to have to, uh, get new membranes and such, and, you know, within the next year or so, and that never, it never actually happened, which saved us from having to do any kind of increases at all. With the new hookups and, uh, now bringing in, uh, septic. Within a two-year period, we should actually be able to see a reduction to the general public, especially with more people coming in.
Yeah. Get that loan paid off.
Yes.
All right. Thank you. That brings us to item number three.
Mr. Mayor, excuse me. There on page, page nine in section eight of that contract, there is kind of a glaring error. It says, "Commercial general liability insurance written on an occurrence basis with limits no less than $500,000 combined single limit per occurrence." And I don't know what that next figure is. It's one comma zero zero comma zero zero zero. I'm assuming it's supposed to say 1 million aggregate for personal inj- injury, but that's not what it says.
You want to for?
Page nine, section eight.
Limit per occurrence and 1 million aggregate for personal injury?
Yeah, but it says one comma zero zero.
Zero missing. Yeah.
Right, exactly. But that's, and, and I know that, uh, that, uh, our attorney thought it should be 1 million and 2 million coverage, but I don't know how that would work out. I think those kind of typos are not good.
No, we, we can easily fix that. Thank you for catching that.
That's good.
Okay, good job. Uh, item number three, review final interlocal agreement for Thurston County Solid Waste Management. So we, we had a, we had a presentation from this from Solid Waste Management about a month ago. Uh, that ILA we sent, you know, we reviewed with you guys. Then we sent it to the attorney. The attorney reviewed it. We sent back the attorney's redlined ILA to Waste Management and then they kicked back a changed ILA. So what we have before us is a fully baked cake where we've had a presentation, uh, we've had review from the attorney. We've had the Waste Management review our attorney's suggestions and we've, uh, put it all together. So we are at this point happy with the ILA and we are asking council to approve the interlocal agreement for Thurston County Solid Waste Management.
I'm moved.
Okay.
It's been moved and seconded to authorize the mayor to sign the ILA between the city and Thurston County Solid Waste. Is there any discussion?
Uh, just, just again, this is more housekeeping than anything else.
Absolutely. Um, I, I, this is a good example of us going through all the right steps and making it easy. It takes longer, but I, I think everybody did a good job. So thank you. Uh, hearing no further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Uh, new business. Uh, this is, uh, the, the legal paid holiday of Juneteenth was signed by Governor. Interpretation of state legal holidays, they may be modified by ordinance, resolution, personnel policies or a CBA. Since Juneteenth is an official state holiday, we will want to update the appropriate document to include the new holiday. Excluded or allow employees an alternate paid holiday. The updated date should reflect it came after the new holiday became law. We're asking to approve making Juneteenth a paid holiday within the city of Tenino.
So moved.
It's been moved. We have a second. We have a second. Uh, is there any discussion?
Yeah, are, is this on top of the legal holidays that are already being paid for? Is this going to be something, uh, something's going to fall off the calendar and this is replacing it?
This is an additional.
Okay. That's what I thought.
Yep.
I think it starts next year, doesn't it?
I believe so.
Yes. All right. No further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
So excited about it.
Thank you, everyone. Uh, that brings us to, we have no resolutions. That brings us, uh, ordinance, and we have no ordinances. Reports, Chamber of Commerce.
Hey, we had a very successful Chamber Commerce meeting last week with Commissioner here and also the economic government manager talking about what's going on with the habitat conservation plan. They're planning to buy some property that can be used as mitigation site. And then we, uh, the mayor actually passed the hat around and raised enough money to buy the coal cars. I don't know if you want to touch on that, Mayor?
Yeah. Okay, I was going to give, give my report, but I, so, yeah, great chamber meeting. George is doing an excellent job. Uh, I, and there were a couple of council members there, Councilmember Callahan, Councilmember Godovac. Uh, city staff attended and, uh, it was a great meeting. Uh, earlier in that day, I had gotten, uh, gotten word from our, our utility clerk, Jen Sharber, that somebody on Facebook Marketplace, apparently that's all she does at work is just look at Facebook. Just kidding. And, uh, she sent a message where somebody was selling what they were saying was some old coal mining cars from the Tonoe area after somebody had passed away. So, uh, Troy Cannon and I, Public Works Director, went down to the area off, it was Little Hanford Road, way out in the middle of nowhere. And there was essentially, they're, they're cleaning out somebody's estate. And these old mining carts were there and they appeared to be, uh, period. You know, you could look at the metal and the trucks that, you know, the roll on the rails and you could tell that these things were, you know, from, you know, before, you know, uh, commercial manufacturing was what it is today and somebody made these things by hand. Uh, so we, we struck a deal with the, with the owner for, and she was very, very generous to compromise and kind of come off what she was asking and, and, and give us a, a good deal. And then, uh, we just, you know, figured I'd go to the Chamber of Commerce meeting and pass around the hat and uh, went up to, to speak and I got a little sheepish because like, nah, this isn't going to work. And then with the encouragement of, of George and Aslan, uh, brought it up and, uh, the first one to raise his hand with some money was our Port, Port Commissioner Bill McGregor. And, and who's, he's a, you know, huge supporter for Tenino. He's done a great job as Port Commissioner. Uh, once he started throwing some money out there, everybody got their wallets out. And we quickly had almost all of the money. And then uh, after the meeting, we made some cold calls to some residents. We knew that we could, uh, strong arm and, or extort or, you know, or ask nicely. And we quickly got more than we had asked for. So we got money to buy the coal carts and a little extra to make sure we had some to help pay for the transportation. And then, uh, Public Works, with the help of Baker's Towing, went out today and picked up the coal carts and brought them home. So you can go to the museum now and they're just sitting on the side. Uh, Jessica Reeves, the museum director is coming up with some plans. She's got some different ideas on how they could be displayed. Uh, we also acquired some newspaper articles and family photos to kind of provide the, the provenance that will, uh, make sure that these, these things are tied to the mining area, the, you know, Tonoe Mine. And, and they have been. We, we can say very confidently that these were used in, you know, holes that went down in the ground in Tonoe in the, you know, twenties and thirties. And we're excited to make that part of our museum. And the community really did a great job this week helping us bring that home.
Yeah, those cars looked really cool that I saw on Facebook.
Yeah, yeah.
Our next chamber meeting will be the third Wednesday of June, and that's when we're going to have the Joe Belmonte retiring superintendent and then the new superintendent be there on site to give us an update on what's going on with Tenino School District. That's the chamber report.
Thank you, George. Thank you, George. Economic Development Council, Mr. Mead.
I think he's left us.
George, you wanna give an update? The EDC hasn't had a meeting, I don't think, since last one.
Yeah, it's gonna be tomorrow, Mayor, and they're gonna be, they're also gonna get an update from the county on the Habitat Conservation Plan as the main part of the meeting for tomorrow.
Okay, uh, you wanna talk about the VCB? They appointed a new director.
Yeah, so Annette Pitts is the new director. They're gonna have an open house for her on June eighth at the Doubletree in downtown. I believe it's from four to eight P M.
Okay, once, once the dust settles and she gets in office, we'll give her an invite to come in and meet the council, and, uh, and I'll, I'll set out to meet with her and kind of talk about Tenino. We've had a good relationship with the VCB. Uh, we wanna, we wanna maintain that. They've been, they've been very helpful to us, and there's, they've, they've been a really, a really a key partner, a lot like the EDC. Fire District Twelve.
Uh, we made, we approved funding to hire, I think it was five, uh, temporary people for the summer because of the wildland fires that were expected to have. This way, we're not short-staffed. Uh, where the, the old, uh, mobile home that's out there going out towards Rochester, uh, we're looking at getting rid of that finally and replacing that, uh, where we're get, getting some numbers on that. Uh, we get, we get, used to have that thing staffed. Guys, go out there now, take a look at it, and said, nah, I'm not gonna live out there. Uh, so we're finally, instead of putting, uh, lipstick on a pig, we're just gonna finally get it replaced. Where, again, we're looking at numbers on that. That's pretty much it.
Thanks, sir. Uh, library. Uh, I don't see a representative, but I went and took a tour of their, uh, innova- renovated insides, and it, it looks really nice. They've got it, they've got, uh, they've kind of downsized the collection and are trying to maximize some of their, like, public space. Uh, you, you used to go in there and you would see library shelves to the ceiling. Uh, they're all a lot lower, so it kind of more of an open concept and more of like a loungy feel. And it, it looks really nice, and they're really proud of it. Uh, if you get a chance, go take a look, uh, and I expect they'll be open soon. Behind the library, with the, through the Creative Arts District grant, you'll see an outdoor reading area and kind of pavilion being constructed. Uh, the lumber package is there, and the construction crew will be working, and they should be done by mid-June. And, and that's gonna be pretty exciting. We will have power out there so that people can, you know, go out there and work remotely, or, you know, plug in their laptop, and it'll be a nice, nice little area for the farmer's market to use. And, uh, we're pretty excited about it.
All that's needed now is, uh, a barista, and it'll be an, uh, it'd be, uh, like a darn Yeah.
No, yeah. Uh, museum.
Uh, okay, I, I do wanna talk a little bit about, about our museum. Has anybody been in there in the last month or so?
I went in last weekend.
Isn't it nice what's happened in there?
Absolutely. Jessica has done a fantastic job.
Yes, she has.
She has done great. The, the collection has been like moved around, that, you know, you, the way she's, uh, set up those, uh, the luggage cart, so you walk in and you really feel like you're going into a train station. It, she's done great.
Yeah, she has. Uh, so I, I would encourage everybody on council to go down there and take a look at it. And the reason for this is because we're strung, we're trying to come up with some numbers to retain her. The grant that we had for her to do the work that's there, and I mean, it is just gorgeous. You walk in there and you just go, wow. Uh, especially since you've, uh, if you've seen it in the past. What Jessica's been able to do was an idea that I brought forward when I was chair. We've, and Jessica found the, the grant money to do it. Uh, while that's running out, we have an idea, and hopefully that, uh, once we have everything flushed out, numbers and stuff like that, that the city can take a more active role, and we can keep this going instead of letting it die out. Our membership, uh, looks like it's a pretty large list. The problem is, is that everybody on there, well, most everybody on there is so old that they can't even move around anymore. So we don't have a whole lot of manpower to do stuff. Because Jessica was being able to be there for the last couple of years to get a lot of the, a lot of the assentioning done that we'd had envisioned, but just didn't have the manpower to do, she got it done. We need to keep this going, otherwise it's gonna fall back again. Uh, also, there's one window that I'm hoping that we can get fixed. It's in, uh, in the back room where, uh, she's really done a lot of work back there. It's just a small window that needs to be replaced. Right now, there's some paper in it.
Okay.
Okay.
Sure, we can take care of the window. Uh, I, and Jessica and I have been speaking as well, and I'm, I'm totally in tune. The great, you know, the grant does run out at the end of the year. Uh, I, and, and we are toying around with the idea of, uh, making the museum director a city position. So, you know, we, it, it would, you know, formalizing these roles that were once, you know, held by volunteers and things like that, as we grow as a city, we grow as a budget, or we grow our budget, uh, these are things that we need to be working on, and this is one that uh, the museum is a, you know, it's an important role in the community. It provides a lot of different uh, things for the community, and, you know, I do intend uh, to make that a, you know, something that's a priority in the budget to see if we can do it. Uh, what exactly that job description would look like is something that we'd have to flush out. Uh, but, and I, and I've asked Jessica, because right now she's an employee of the South Thurston Historical Commission, and, you know, I know that they are very, uh, protective of, you know, their, their organization and their independence. Uh, I, you know, I've asked Jessica to have, start the conversation, but make sure that she conveys that the city's not trying to take over anything. We just wanna make sure that we can, uh, formalize these things and be good stewards of these things, and keep them going forward. So, when you go, please convey that message too. We're not, we don't wanna take over anything. We wanna make sure that things continue going in the direction that they're going.
Yeah, she told us, uh, that the grant was running out, and the first words out of my mouth is, how much is it gonna cost so that I can bring it forward to the rest of the city? Uh, so we're just waiting on her to come up with some numbers.
My understanding is about five hundred a month.
Yeah, that, which is, which is really inexpensive. What is it, six thousand a year, something like that? So it's really inexpensive, especially for the work that she's done. It's just, it's just incredible. Uh, the visitors that are starting to come in now, they used to go, wow, this is pretty cool. Now the wow has a lot more of excitement into it. So it's, it's just something that I feel that we, we need to do. I felt that we needed to do it a long time ago. Uh, we're finally at the position. Now it's just keeping, keeping the funding alive.
Yeah, well, i- if you recall, not this year's budget, but the previous year's budget, we did budget for a, uh, like a Parks and Rec person. And the vision was to have someone that would be building programming in to our parks and our recre- and be, creating recreation opportunities. Uh, so formalizing the museum, I would also like to see us consider formalizing things like youth sports. If you go to other communities, uh, they, they run the youth sports programs. Uh, in, in us not doing that in Tenino, it creates like friction points where we have like, uh, independent organizations that are, you know, just using our fields without, uh, without speaking to us. We have different baseball organizations that compete over the same field, and they don't schedule games with us. Sometimes they show up, and so there's a lot of, uh, there, there's a lot of like pressure points that just could be ironed out if we formalized a lot of these roles. The same with, you know, youth soccer and things like that. You could even get into adult softball. Uh, so I, 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 I do wanna see us going that way with a number of different things, so just put that in your head.
Mu- museum first.
Tenino Community Service Center. Uh, I met with them the other day. Uh, if you loo- if you were to go and take a look, so their building was purchased by a local businessman and uh, and, and monopoly man who's buying up all of Tenino. Uh, it, but it's, it's been a good thing for the, the service center, because now they've got somebody that is an active uh, landlord, and they've been able to get a lot of money in grants. And the, the, the food bank on Main Street is, it looks completely different than it did a year ago. If you go in and you look at their, uh, their refrigeration and freezers, they're all brand-new commercial units. Uh, a year or two ago, they were like things that were purchased at garage sales. And, and then they had an electrical fire where they were able to replace everything. They put in, uh, backup power units. Uh, so at each of the facilities, including our city building, they have, through grants, installed external generators. They have fairly large propane tanks that run them, so that if the power goes down, uh, the refrigeration is lo- not lost. There have been a moment in times when power's been lost and they've had to throw out a lot of food. So they have really come a long way. Their building, uh, which was, it was in disrepair when they first moved into it. It now looks like a cute little grocery store, and they, they're, they're doing fantastic. Uh, Jody and Pat from the food bank have done phenomenal. Uh, in the face of, you know, a major crisis over the last year, they've, they've really, really shown what they can do, and it's, it's amazing. They're still excited about it. So it was pretty cool. Uh, the Arch Commission.
I'd like to shout out the Tenino Lions Club also. They're in volunteering down there all the time, helping, helping them.
There's not a day that you don't drive by where you see somebody in a yellow vest outside the food bank helping them, you know, get things unloaded, move things around. So, yeah, that's been great. Good, thank you for mentioning that, Linda. George, the Arch.
The Chamber is actually partnering with the food bank, and the food bank is gonna run the vendor part of Oregon Trail Days as well, and available to split the money between the Chamber and the food bank, and they're also have a food bank donation, so we're trying to really create partnership with everybody in the community. Arch Commission, we're just waiting for other people to apply, and we've encouraged three more people, and hopefully they'll get their application in by next month.
Okay. Civil Service, facade improvement grant review committee. Is there an update there, Linda?
Well, I delivered, um, uh, applications to Jay Johnson at the Kodiak Room. She is interested in, uh, applying, so and that's the only news I have so far.
Okay. Planning Commission. So I, I, I can't paraphrase it. I, I know what they talked about, but I did not attend. Uh, but I know that they are talking about a, a, uh, some, it's like text language change to the zoning of the Ag Park. Public Safety Committee, Chief of Police, okay. So I, I, I believe I've talked to, I, I know I've talked to all the council members about this, but this is, you know, first time uh, speaking about it publicly, and I'm just gonna start by reading, uh, Christie's letter. So Chief Loheed, uh, it is, and this is, you know, this is, I share this with a heavy heart. Uh, "It is with great regret and disappointment that I must advise of my retirement from the position of police chief of the city of Tenino. I have enjoyed the challenges and new friendships I've encountered while working for the city. However, an underlying medical condition has made it impossible for me to continue safely in this position. For many years, I've had a neurological deficit in my right hand, which made it difficult but not impossible to function normally. This condition had seemed to be stable and manageable, and the medical opinion was that it would remain stable. Recently, however, I suffered a medical event which has caused a noticeable decline in the function of my right arm and hand. My doctor does not know whether the condition will worsen. However, he is relatively confident that it will not improve. For my own safety and that of the citizens of Tenino, I am unable to continue working in my current position at this level of function. I wish to thank everyone at the city of Tenino for the assistance and advice they have offered in the past few months. And I know the next chief will be warmly welcomed. I will miss the daily interactions with staff and citizens. I have been involved in some sort of law enforcement for the past twenty-six years, and I am still processing the feelings involved in having to leave a profession that has literally been a calling for me half of my life. Thank you for the confidence and support you have offered me. Sincerely, Christie Loheed." Uh, so I, it's, it's unfortunate, and it's with a heavy heart that I had to, you know, accept the resignation or the retirement. And, uh, you know, we're, we're moving on. We're, we will be appointing an interim chief shortly, and I'll provide announcements about that. And, uh, and we'll just keep moving forward. The police department is fully staffed, and we're stable. Christie has offered to volunteer and help out with some administrative functions. And, and so, you know, we're, we're using her that, to that capacity. But she, she's been very honest that, uh, with the, the neural, the neurological deficits she has suffered due to a recent medical incident, she, she can no longer use her right arm, which, you know, it, it's not compatible but with being an operational officer. So, um, does anybody have any questions on that front?
I just think it's very sad.
Yeah, she, she feels horrible. She feels like she's let us down, but I, you know, I've told her that that, you know, nobody feels that way. This is something that was completely out of her control. Uh, we really appreciate what she's done, the time that she's put in, and, you know, the, the role that she's played thus far. It's, you know, it's sad, it's sad that we won't get to see what she could really do when she's, you know, totally comfortable in the position, but, you know, it, it is what it is. Any other questions? Okay. Director of Public Works, he will be giving us a presentation at the next meeting on our, the 2020 Water Report, which uh, is a, is a, it's a very favorable report. There's, uh, been a lot of improvements and, and reduction in water loss. Uh, so our, uh, our water calculations have moved in a good direction. And I'll, I'll let him explain that all to you next meeting. City Planner Building Official, uh, Dan Penrose is back. He's in a wheelchair. I don't know if everybody heard that he, uh, he did have an accident while he was on vacation playing frisbee on the beach, and he shattered his hip. He sent me a picture of the x-ray, and it looks like, you know, there's enough screws to, you know, fill a hard, uh, Ace Hardware bin. He, he really, he really got hit hard, but he's, he's doing a good job. He's, he's still producing for us. And, uh, you know, I, I hope he gets a full recovery, because hip, hip fracture's not fun. Uh, City Attorney, not present. Clerk Treasurer, Ms. Becca Anderson.
All right. Uh, just a couple things I wanted to update on. This has been a crazy busy first week, for sure. Um, first off, our city hall reno is moving along. If you haven't seen it, the, um, floors upstairs have been sanded and prepped for staining, and they are looking awesome. Uh, we've got the outside of the building was painted today, and then we're working on colors and getting the upstairs painted as well. Um, there's a couple things just to point out on the Ag Park, some housekeeping with our current, um, extension of the project. The monies, everything's already gone through. There's a couple of housekeeping items, and we're gonna have to transfer a hundred and sixteen dollars from the retainage fund to the general fund. That won't affect anything. There's no new money coming out. The cost, the price has already been settled. It's just an interior move from funds. Um, the biggest thing I've been working on this week for sure is getting our reports in order. Um, our annual financial report is due to the state auditor this Friday. So I have been trying to get that going and settled. Um, we'll have to do 2019 as well, but since that's already a year behind, we figured we'd just go forward with the 2020, and so we're in compliance with that one at least, which getting those settled will then, um, allow us to do a couple other projects that have been in the works, and they're just held up because the financials haven't been reported. Uh, quick update from, I've been speaking with Mike Marshall. He is going to be putting the Quarry House Pool Project back out for bid next month. That grant has been extended into next year. So hopefully we will get some people bidding on that this go-round. And then, um, the other one, the Query House Reno Project, um, is been on hold for a little bit. We're waiting on the NIPA agreement, which that, um, Jacinda has been working on getting that moving forward, so as soon as that is done, we will hopefully move forward with that contract, and then bids out for that as well. And that is all I have for now.
So, and we have any question? So, and we have any questions for the Clerk Treasurer? She's done a great job. She's had a big, you know, first week. There's a lot of stuff to cover. And, you know, it's a, it's a total blast to the face. So thank you for, you know, just going through it with us and we'll, we'll get there.
I appreciate the update, Becca. Thank you.
Thank you.
Be that. Oh, no, me, Mayor. Uh, I've had, you know, several ag park meetings, uh, which you've heard updates on, all sounding very promising. Uh, a lot of questions online about the park and the play toys. Uh, we have, you know, the, the insurance company has contracted out and ordered the parts. Uh, they're supposed, you know, everything's on back order. We've got supply chain issues, uh, all over the world. And so these things are coming in as I have been told, July, uh, the plate structure will be fixed. So a lot, there have been people, well, why don't you tear it out? It's broken. We have torn out the parts that are broken. Uh, we, you know, we put up barricades around it. The barricades get torn down. We go put up more barricades. It's, it's public space, so it's a constant battle. But the playground structure that exists is going to be repaired with replacement parts. Uh, that is what the insurance company, uh, said they would do. Uh, they were giving us $25,000 to complete that. And that's, that's in the works. Uh, we, if you look online, there was discussion begun about a pump track. And I talked about it a little bit, little bit with you guys here. I'm getting numbers to bring a proposal forward for the council to, uh, place a bike pump track and talk about what one is. Uh, this would be targeting, uh, youth that are a little older than some of the amenities that we have. And for years, everybody has said we need to include amenities for. And it's a, it's kind of an inclusive design. You can, you can, anybody that can be on a scooter or a skateboard or even a wheelchair, they say, can use these things. And, uh, so I'll bring forward a design, bring forward some costs. And we would be eyeballing that, uh, some of that ARP money to do that. The parking lot, you got an update on that? The mine carts, you heard about that? Uh, Lemon Hill Development, so, uh, within the, what was the Alpacas of America, uh, land envelope, uh, it has been broke down into essentially three different segments. Uh, the middle segment where you will see what was once that giant blue barn, but is now a black barn. And it looks pretty cool. Uh, that is the Tenino Equestrian Center. That has been purchased. That is official. That is going on. To the west of that area, there's about 1,300, 1,500 acres that, uh, I, I'll just, I, we've talked about it before and I, I think the, the ink's not quite dry, but it's drying. But Wash Department of Fish and Wildlife is purchasing or has almost purchased that 1,500 acre tract with the upland being, uh, moved into like a permanent status of public property for outdoor recreation. The lower prairie land area would be, uh, it would be open to the public. But I think, I believe it would be like a mitigation bank for prairie species. So it would probably look something like if you go to the Mima Mound Preserve, where you're not allowed to get off the, the trail that goes through there, but you go in there and it tells you all about the habitat. So it's open to the public to go in and enjoy, but it's a, it's a tread lightly kind of thing. Not that the rest of it you would want to, you know, destroy and raise heck on. The other portion, Lemon Hill is around, I want to say 300 acres, maybe 200 acres. I, I don't, I don't recall exactly. Uh, but that begins, that property begins at Old 99, uh, to the east of that barn area. And it goes up onto the hillside, uh, pretty much to Morningside Drive, up to where our, our water towers are. It's a big tract of land. Uh, it's what we have pushed for our, our residential development to occur on that hillside. Uh, I did meet with a potential developer that is very committed to this project and has a lot of finances, uh, already invested in it. And they are, they're projecting, uh, you know, some, some houses in the tune of 250, uh, homes. Uh, this is not, you know, I can't share everything about it, but that information is gonna start coming very quickly to us. Uh, there will likely be a, a, uh, pre-application conference with staff in the next two to three weeks. And then they would be coming to the council and talking to the council. And then they would begin a series of, of, uh, public outreach efforts in which they would, they would bring in, they would do some, uh, town hall meetings and things like that to talk to the public about what their plans and vision would be. Uh, they, they've been very open and honest. And they have been very adamant that they want to be in line with the community's vision. And they want to work with the city to make sure that we're all marching in the same direction. And that we're all building a community that is, uh, you know, in line with what everybody, uh, you know, wants it to be to the best of our ability. Questions? Be that.
Uh, let's see, they're having a celebration tomorrow at six on their Zoom. So if you guys want to hop on there and celebrate with them, just go to their website and just click on their Zoom link.
Okay. Solid Waste Advisory Board, Mr. Copeland.
All right, uh, we meet next week, but, uh, last city council meeting, we had a bunch of good stuff coming out. And then we just approved the, uh, solid waste plan today. So, cool stuff.
Awesome. Thank you. Steady.
Our next set, our next steady meeting will be, uh, the third Friday, June 18th. And we're gonna actually have the Washington State Department of Commerce come and give an update on what's going on with them and what are available to help support our rural communities.
Okay. Tenino School Board, Rachel is not here. TRPC, that's you again, Mr. Cutter.
I'm back. Um, we meet next week.
What was that?
Oh, I cut out, sir. Uh, we meet next week.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
Uh, I actually covered the, uh, Tenino School Board meeting Monday. They introduced their, uh, their, uh, Tenino Strong Scholars, who happened to number 10 this year. It's no longer the top 10, but it's, and Robbie, Robert Marty is the valedictorian. And I forget the name of the, uh, of the salutatorian. But, uh, they praised them and described their accomplishments.
Awesome. Thank you. I've been seeing a lot of, uh, really good athletes in the newspaper too. Uh, yeah. Uh, what, what, uh, Emily, is it Emily Baxter?
Yeah, she was, she's the pitcher.
Oh, my God. The review that they gave her for the, uh, like the, the all-county softball players basically said she's, you know, she rivals any softball pitcher in the state, which is amazing.
Yeah, the Chronicle named three other pitchers as their, uh, Players of the Year.
Yeah, well, they, they missed the mark. It should have been her.
I think so.
All right, TPB, Mr. O'Callahan.
Uh, we met and I haven't got the after-minute yet, so I'll, the, there's one thing that I do want to bring up. We went through, uh, 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 God, now I can't think of the, the proper terminology. Uh, trip, uh, trip reduction. And Karen, uh, yeah, Karen has been talking about that for years. Maybe I've been really engrossed in watching what the heck was going on. But she brought in a speaker that she thought was just a wonderful person. Uh, I think Karen has been doing a better job than the person she thought that she brought in to talk to us about, uh, you know, community trip reduction. Uh, and it was about a 15, 20 minute thing. I think it was supposed to be inspiring. And again, maybe it's because I've delved so deeply into it, it kind, she kind of bored me. Uh, but for most anybody else, it may have been a, a very interesting conversation. And I've already brought up a lot, a lot to this council, what this woman was talking about, especially because of the paradigm shift that we've had with COVID. Uh, so as soon as I get the after, after minute, after meeting minutes, I'll get those sent out.
Thank you, Councilmember O'Callahan. That brings us to public comment period number two. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to provide public comment, please do so at this time. Say your name and address. Going once, going twice, gone. Announcements. Councilmember O'Callahan.
Nope, not yet.
Yeah, right. And I'm gonna move on and you're like, all right, I got one. Has anybody else got any announcements before he actually is honest with us about his announcements?
All right, no, I'm kidding.
All right, hearing none, uh, meeting adjourned.
Non-debatable, non-debatable motion.
All right, thank you everyone. Have a good night.